Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting the Pender County Board of Education Order. We have determined we had to have a quorum. Our minister that was coming to pray for us tonight had called on the way here. He's not going to be able to make it. So if you would stand for a moment of silence while I'm at the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Mr. Hall, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of doubt.
Thank you. Thank you. You may be seated. Board members, you have the agenda. Admissions or deletions, is there approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to be adding an item about class utilization. I guess would be a good term to use for it. Maybe elective class utilization is where I'll try to go with it.
Board members, you've heard Mr. Hall's request for information.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Hall, where would you like that? Would you like that as an information item or an action item, sir?
No, information is fine.
Information, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Second motion.
It's a second. Any discussion? If not, can we amend the agenda to 7.6 classroom utilization? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Recognitions. We have to approve the agenda, I'm sorry. So, board members, we have the motion to amend the agenda with that item. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the amendment added.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board members. Now, recognitions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we're going to have a unique honor. We know they're at the National Honor Society, but tonight, we're actually moving forward with that and introducing some students who have made it to the National Technical Honor Society. The National Technical Honor Society is a career technical student organization that allows students to be honored for their overall academic success, specifically in career and technical education. Each student earned the honor by being a CTE concentrator and having a minimum GPA 3.0 in a CTE concentration, or by being a CTE concentrator and having a minimum 3.0 GPA in a concentration and an overall GPA. A total of 13 students earned their way into the National Technical Honor Society because of various commitments. We have three of them tonight that we can recognize publicly. Along with that, we have our CTE chair, Ms. Amber Wall, and our Hattie Craft principal, Mr. Michael Taylor. You guys come up and have me introduce you to you. So you'll introduce the statement.
Good evening, so I'm Amber Wall, I'm the Career Development Coordinator at Hattie Craft High School, and we're very thankful to have some of our student representatives to be our first inductees into the National Technical Honor Society again at Hattie Craft. We have many other students that are going to be able to qualify in the future, but of the students that weren't able to be here today, they're really well-rounded students, and they're playing sports, are representing our school that way, and some of them have jobs as well, so just wanted to say they wanted to be here as well, but we're just so thankful to be able to have this National Technical Honor Society at our school, and wouldn't be able to happen without them. So, thank you so much. No, thank you.
Yeah, let's have her do the quick one.
All right, so the first student is Jaylen Harvey. Next is Zachary Gorski. Next is Xavier Shepherd. And our other student is Abigail Easton-Massing.
All the ones in the back, well, it would be definitely you.
Yes, you are.
Like I'm taller, it ain't gonna work.
You're about a foot shorter than I am. Good try, though.
One, two, three. Another one, two, three. Hey, you're welcome to go get your watch and take your.
Congratulations. Thank you, Dr. Hill, and congratulations to those that received awards. Moving on into the information, uh, public comments. We have no signups tonight. Do we have any call-ins, no call-ins, or no comments? Into the public information agenda, Dr. B., District COVID Protocalls Processes.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we can retire this after the smoke.
That would be our pleasure. All right, so, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So, this will be just a very quick and straightforward sort of thing. And it happens to be the other one. So, we've been posting, of course, on a weekly basis, and as you can see, the last two weeks, and especially this past week, with respect to confirmed positives and currently excluded, the numbers have precipitously dropped. We are very pleased that we are seeing this progress, and hopefully, in the near future, not only will we not have to have the segment for public information, but COVID will go away and never come back again. But it is what it is. So, a couple things to be aware of. What I wanted to bring to your attention, and we do need to get the Health Department online if you guys have any questions after this. But with respect to the latest strong schools NC update, which was February 25th, and there's supposed to be another one coming out this Friday, and I really wanted to bring this to your attention for all of the reasons listed above in red, this very last portion, that the impact of individual contact tracing on transmission during the stage may be limited. And so therefore, individual contact tracing and exclusion from the school after an identified exposure is no longer recommended statewide. So, this is cause for celebration. Our nurses are very glad when they heard about this coming out. We heard the cheering all the way over at Central Office from east and west side. So, this is a very big one, and of course, effective February 21st. Also, specific to masking on our buses, currently, the CDC has updated its guidance and per guidance that we're seeing in strong schools, and the information that we've received from NCPI, to not require that people wear masks on buses or vans operating by public or private school systems, including early care and education childcare programs. So, this is cause for celebration. And so, that really is it. We hope that it's over. We know that there's going to be issues that crop up occasionally, and as this goes from pandemic to epidemic to endemic, being part of daily life, hopefully, we won't see the issues that we've lived with for the past two years. We know that it's been tremendously difficult on parents and kids, staff members. We know. We've all been there, and so, questions concerning anything that we're seeing appear?
Any questions for Dr. B.? No questions, sir, thank you. Dr. Aiken?
Director Duff. This was the chairman of the committee on the board. This is actually, I wanted to give a quick presentation regarding an activity that has been common in Pender County for the past several years, actually four-plus years, but I really want to make sure that those who run it have an opportunity to share with you what it is, how we do it, and what it tells us when it comes to specifically instructional practices and where we need to go. So, I'd like to sort of introduce and invite several people to come up and be a part of this. In particular, Ms. Stacy Pullen, who's our executive director for 3K. Ms. Lindsay Lo, she was our ESL director and lead teacher. Ms. Leanne Radabaugh, who is our MTSS lead, and actually will be kicking off tonight's presentation. Mr. Kevin Taylor, who is our student services director. And then, Ms. Dee Owens, our elementary director, and Dr. Lee, our secondary and CTE director. I mean, sorry, secondary AIG director. And then, Ms. Willa Weber, our CTE director, would have been here, unfortunately, she has one to come up, she can't be here tonight. So, several times a year, we get together with this team, and also staff from across the district level. At times, we've had the classroom teachers and principals involved, and we take a look at any available data that we have that regards to our students, and we spend a day with some facilitation, and we go through and try to look at both old data, current data, ongoing data, and try to get a feel for how our students are doing, how's our district doing overall. So, I'd like to actually turn it over first to Ms. Radabaugh, to kind of give a little more information. Ms. Radabaugh is our MTSS lead, she's also our parent engagement liaison for Title I, but she, this last time, actually led the process for getting us all together, getting us organized, running the meeting, and so I really want to give her a chance to talk for a while.
So, we had our district data dive a couple of Fridays ago, and what we do is we invite a really large group from across the district, a cross-disciplinary group, to come. We have directors all the way down to classroom teachers, chief officers. We invite instructional coaches, exceptional children, AIG, EL, migrant. We have representatives of after-school and testing and accountability to all come with their diverse perspectives and diverse expertise about data. We look at academic data, behavior data, attendance data, social-emotional data, mental health data, because when the state asks us to evaluate our multi-tiered systems of support, they force us to look at all of those aspects of our school programs, not just academic data. And like Dr. Aiken said, we generally look at it when we have those big data sets come in, which are BOY, MOY, and DOI. It serves as part of our comprehensive needs assessment. I think of it like the pin in your Google Maps. So, if you don't know where you're starting from, then you don't know which route to take to get where you're going. So, we look at that to determine the impact that what all of us are doing are having on kids, and we can also look at the impact that some of those things out of our control are having on our students. It's a really fun day, if you ask me, I don't know if you ask anybody else if they would think it was a really fun day, but we get together in small groups, and each group has their own particular assignment. So, we have a group that just looks at attendance and demographic data. We have a group that looks at K5, excuse me, 3K, five academic data, 6-8 data, 9-12 data, just specifically EVOs data, and then behavior, SEL, and mental health data. They kind of wrestle with it, argue about it, pick it apart, put it back together, and at the end of the day, we come back together as a group and share our findings, and look for commonalities and trends across maybe multiple grade spans or multiple areas of need, to come up with strengths to celebrate, and then areas to continue to monitor.
So, in that vein, in terms of demographics, so, just to give the board a comparison, we took a look at our current data, which we have on the dashboards and other places, and then looked at 2019. I won't try to go through all of it, obviously, student population, we all know about, we've now crossed easily across 10,000. A couple of ones that we thought were kind of powerful, so one is in the, what's the arrow award? There. One, we've shared with the board, the growing number of English language learners in our district, that was born out. We've talked about the growth in exceptional children, that too was born out, our AIG numbers have increased. One that we wanted to explain in case anyone noticed was our homeless students. It looks like we went from 9% to 0.6%, but what I would share with anyone looking at it is, you got to remember, 2019, when that data was pulled, we were coming out of Florence. So, we had a significantly higher-than-normal number of homeless students. So thankfully, that reduction is a good reduction. The other one that we really wanted to point out was the growth in the number of our military-connected students, almost 300%, if I do that correctly, Dr. Lee. We've been talking and hearing all about the growth, we've heard about the transfer of families from San Diego and places like that. We were told around 2019 to expect it, and it is certainly bearing itself out. So, this is one of those pieces that we take a look at. The other two that we sort of thought was odd, Pender County actually has more male students than female students. That's actually not normal, usually, it's the females that outnumber the males. So, I'll start off with the strengths to be celebrated, and then I'm going to really want the directors to speak to it, because they deserve the credit for most of this. One of the ones that we were most excited about was in our early review of the EVOs data, measuring the impact of our students, of our teachers, on student growth. One of the things that just absolutely thrilled us was when we looked at subgroups for every single test, fourth grade and up. Both our English language learners and our students with disabilities met or exceeded growth in every single possible category. That was something that absolutely thrilled us. We think it's because of other research we've done and think we put it in place. The other one is, and this is actually a table that Ms. Kimbo deserves a credit for, she puts together a chart measuring all the districts in the southeast, and we look at state average, Pender County average, and then how all of our districts have done on a variety of EOC and EOG measures, and Pender County was at or above the state average in every single one of those. We were only at in two, we were above in all of the others. And actually, when you look at other districts, oftentimes, we were either tied for second, tied for third, there were a few that we'll talk about where we need to get, if we want to get better, we were only at the state average. But those were some things that we really celebrated in recognition of some of the work that's been done. And actually, I'm going to ask Dr. Lee to talk about some of the next ones.
Okay. Graduation rate was 93%, and at beginning of the year, we graduated 112 students, and I have to say that that is a K-12 effort, even though the end result is in high school, that really is a K-12 effort. Fortas Earn Student Work First credentials at the state have to give props to Bonnie Woolen Weber. She's taken Dr. Hill's message about career and college readiness, and she has ran with it. Fall 2021 CTE scores were 79.7%, which is above the state average, and sixth to eighth graders have all shown growth, growth in checking in from BOY and MOY. And check-ins are state-administered intrums that we give a couple of times during the year.
And just for those listening, DOI is beginning of year, MOY is middle of the year, and DOI is end of the year. So, Ms. Pullen?
On top of that, Tom, I was looking at the 3K. Our reading book is at least 50% across all of our subgroups. Now, when you say 3K reading, that doesn't mean they're sitting down reading books. That's phonological awareness and discriminating rhyme and alliteration, and like finding the smaller parts of words, and how they appreciate books, and understand and comprehend books, and it's like that, that's my goal.
When science of reading was introduced, we looked into, we looked into different areas and identified phonemic awareness as an area that we could grow in. So, we had a few schools at the beginning of the year to implement a program called Hegarty, and through data analysis, we have been able to show that we've had some great gains in the area of phonemic awareness with this program, and also a lot of positive, a lot of positive reactions from both teachers and students with the program, so we're excited about that. K through five, reading exceeded state growth from beginning of the year to middle of the year, and that's based on the average composite score, and so, we have been above the state growth in both BOY and MOY. 89% of our K5 students met typical growth from beginning of the year to middle of the year in math, and we have, we have, we have exceeded, and we have grown in proficiency, too. We went from 22% at the beginning of the year to 44% at the middle of the year.
And finally, we knew that SEL and mental health was going to be an opportunity this year, based on the past that we've had, so very happy to report that the primary teachers and counselors, the whole type of processes is one of the belt there. They're really chipping in to try to address the needs that are going to be brought forward. We're also doing a pretty good job with the upper levels, well, approach is a little bit different from the other areas, with the number of higher also, so happy to report that.
So, it is a combination of sort of what we call old data, certainly, last EOC data is gone, but it does give us a sense, and then you sort of notice it shifts to current data, and that's kind of what it is. In some ways, it's a little bit like a report card, it's a self-measurement that we try to give ourselves. So, there were others, but those were ones that the team really wanted to make sure that we shared. However, there are always areas that we kind of want to get a little bit better at, and again, I want to ask some of the, of our experts to talk about each of these. Some of these will not be surprising, they're ones we've talked about in the past, and some certainly reflect a current reality, especially now we're talking four years of disrupted instruction. So, Ms. Radabaugh, you'll talk about what chronic absenteeism is and what it means for us.
So, nationally, the definition of chronic absenteeism has long been missing 10% or more of the school year at any given time. It's not the three, six, 10-day letters that you send home, because there's a difference in missing 10 days in the first 60, and missing 10 days in 110. So, in 2018, the state actually adopted that as policy for North Carolina, they defined chronic absenteeism, and that was in 2018. In 2018, the average rate in North Carolina was 15% of all the students being chronically absent, healthy is below 10. Tender County was hanging around 15% at that time, and also in 2019, up until, we all don't want to talk about attendance because of the thing that's going on, but we track it because we need to know. Back in 2019, we had anywhere between some schools that were at a healthy 9% to some schools that were at a 23% chronic absenteeism rate. Right now, we're running K8, about 40% of our students were chronically absent by the 100th day of school, which means had missed 10 or more days of school. For whatever reason, chronic absenteeism is defined as excused or unexcused, because it measures lots of instructional time, not like truancy where it's unexcused. So, that's a little shocking, but there, it is.
Third grade reading has been identified by the state as an area of need for across the whole state, and therefore, that is why we were being introduced to the science of reading, to increase reading proficiency in our third grades based on RTA. So, Pender County is, is right in line with that. We've seen small growth from the beginning of the year to middle of the year, going from 43% to 44% in our, in our data. So, we're, we're looking at that, the state's looking at that, and addressing it with the training and offers from letters for science of reading.
Transitioning from fifth to sixth grade, our fifth graders, according to EVOs, has exceeded growth this year, and in the past, they've always met or exceeded growth for the last, I would say, at least three years, and their proficiency would be at this level by the time they left sixth grade, it may be at this level, and as for growth in proficiency. What we're doing as a district to kind of monitor this is, one, we're having purpose for transition meetings for sixth graders to get acquainted with their middle school prior to them coming. Not only are we doing this in the summer, and this year, we're doing a two-week extension of that, with some funding we got from the state to help us with that, and also, what we're trying to do is do some of those transition meetings or nights during the school year. Something else that we're doing to help with that transition from fifth to sixth grade is to start those vertical alignment meetings with teachers. This helps fill gaps, if there are any, in the state curriculum. It also helps the fifth grade teachers see where the students are going, and it helps the sixth grade teachers see where the students are coming from. So, we're going to have to purposely schedule those meetings, whether it's using money for subs, whether we use workdays, whether we use days in the summer, but we're going to have to start. But we're going to have to start purposely scheduling those fifth to sixth grade teacher alignment meetings.
And just to follow up, Dr. Lee mentioned the state providing funding. So the sixth grade drop is not a new one. That has been something that has been a challenge for the state and the country for a very long time. This last year, the state provided a grant opportunity, which we wrote and did receive some money for. I think the state calls it Bridge. We're talking about transitions, but it's the same idea. So in August, we do hope to fully extend and really develop those transition opportunities. We plan on working with community and schools in 21st Century, who generally have helped us out with a few locations. But we want this to be across the board, looking at making sure that students have an opportunity to visit their new schools, be in those schools, see those teachers. And in addition, we hope to try to do some enrichment activities in July along with some intervention work in August. So it's not just come see and take a tour. It really will be some intensive work with the teachers, having an opportunity to work with their teachers. Students may not be their assigned students, but certainly a sixth-grade teacher working with a sixth-grade student to specifically deal with this, because it's not a new one. That's one of the few that's really not about right now. We've seen that issue for a long time. Ms. Paul, you want to talk about the subgroups, since ELS are certainly part of that?
So our English learners, our students with disabilities, and our African-American subgroups, according to EVAAS, met growth across all grade spans, which is great. Growth is different from proficiency. However, that's the road to get us to proficiency. So we're hoping to continue on that road and continue with the efforts that have gotten us there in that growth pattern.
So about two years ago, we embarked, a lot of people in this room actually, including all of us, embarked on a journey to develop the mental health ELS plan for the district, coming together and involving a few. You know, we kind of, I mean, you guys want to be a challenge for us on opportunity, like I said before. The students that are receiving mental health assessments and services in our schools, we're continuously monitoring that to make sure that we have services in place for those individuals, whether they be an outside provider or being created within house to build development plans for that. So we're continuing that effort to make sure we're still following the mental health ELS plan. And that was a big component of that.
So I'm going to ask, I think Ms. Teles is going to continue. One of the things that we really work hard to is we don't provide the impression that we just sit all day and analyze, and then off we go. The work that this team does and has done over the past several years really has led to some very tangible benefits and some tangible outcomes. So I'm asking them to kind of share kind of what they do with this information after we do spend it. It is a fun day. We spend the day going through this and having conversations as a group. Jeff, you want to keep us going?
I'm here with that. It is actually fun. I enjoy it. I'm not saying it because you're here.
I know.
We use that the information that we have as a district level, and we share it with the schools, the school leaders, and their individual buildings. We talk a lot about triangulation of that. So that comes up very often in our meetings, and we help. By doing this, they're able to see a trend, you know, compare their school to the district trend, compare last year's data at the school to this year's data at the school. So they're able to triangulate that in a meaningful way. We try not to make decisions based on one piece of that, in other words. Information used to monitor current initiatives, analyze any of the stuff that we have from that, including strengths and areas of growth. Those are the biggest components we do want to celebrate. But Rick has been good about making us celebrate small wins when we meet. Sometimes we forget that we do actually have some successes, but we focus so much on the things that we need to work on. But that is a big component of that, to celebrate those successes. And the schools will do that as well. We try to model as much as we can what we want the schools to do. And we go support them when they, when they're meeting with their school-approved teams or bad teams or teams of a nature, when they request the help from us. And then the last part on there is just to determine district programming needs and budget priorities. That's huge. We are trying to be as fiscally responsible with taxpayers' money in terms of making sure we purchase things that are needed, making sure that we can justify those purposes based on our business. Can you guys jump in? This is supposed to be before that, but I'm counting on you. You guys jump in? Okay. Any questions for the group?
I'm going to stare them down a little bit, because we talk about practicing wait time. So some of them know they have additional lines they're supposed to be saying, and I don't hear them, so.
How then? Professional development and changes, it's big for the elementary, pre-K, 3-5 right now with the science of reading implementation. And we do have a science of reading team who is working together to identify resources that we can support our teachers in as they're learning so that they can go back into the classroom and have the resources they need to implement these practices. We also are coming up with extra supportive ways of, you know, conversations for PLCs to continue the learning and development of our teachers to support student outcomes. So we're really excited about that endeavor.
Math instruction has been something we've talked about. I think Dr. Lee has some more that she can share about how math instruction has been impacted by this work.
So I think our schools and education, we have gotten so tied down into what resource we're going to use. And I always try to tell teachers, whether you're teaching functions with a book or a computer program, functions is functions. So we have to target, and we have been targeting professional development on standard. What standard are you teaching? Are you fulfilling the need of this standard? So we're doing a lot of standard analysis with our teachers in both middle and high schools. And that's also aligned with the social studies as well, with the new standards that's coming out from the state with our social studies.
And just to provide the board an example, when we talk about district programming, so last year, and I want to thank you for your help, I'm going to look at Ms. Paul. We recognized through similar processes last year that that growth in our English learners, we were able to target specifically some places where that's occurring. And while we always talked about the impact of the Rocky Point and Castle Hain areas, what we were able to see was actually the 17th side of our district actually has some of the highest percentage growth. It still doesn't have the highest numbers, but we were able to see some of the impacts of those students enrolling, which then made us have to look at some other resources, which then led to requests regarding the ability to up the number of certified staff working in that area, all of which we've now done. I think some of that had a direct impact on the results you saw. But that work over the last year and a half, two years, in meetings like this is a specific example of where that's led us to very specific requests to the board or to Dr. Hill when we look at budgeting. So it is not something that we just sit around and congratulate ourselves and say, hey, yeah, there's the data. We really do try to use it to either justify things we are doing or make some tweaks to the future. So I just wanted them to get a time. We will get the board a hard copy of some of the results, but try to make it a nice one-pager that you can kind of see. But you'll see columns where we list here all the things that were listed as strengths, especially those are multiple areas. And here are some of the things that we're focusing on and continuing to track. And when we go from one data meeting to the next, we carry that information with us so we can see what did we say the last time we met was something to be looking at or celebrating. And is that still a celebration? Is it still an area to focus on, or has it sort of resolved itself one way or the other? So we'll make sure the board has that as soon as we can kind of get it polished and edited and the grammar correct. But I do want to thank this team. There's many that aren't here that were here that Friday. But they really worked hard, and we still want to make sure I thank Ms. Rattleoff for taking the leadership on that and getting it done for us. And that's sort of the basis of our presentation. We'll be glad to answer any questions if we can on this work, and we will do it two to three times a year.
Thank you. Board members, you have any questions? Before you sit down, sir, that was your last presentation, that wasn't?
I've got two more to, I'm up before you again twice tonight.
Those are mostly contracted detail. This is what he does.
Presentation. I just want to say thank you on behalf of myself and the board for what you've done for the district in your time here. Good luck in your future endeavors. I hope to see you around. I hope you're staying in the area, I hope.
I'll still have kids in the district. I'll still be a parent, not moving. But you've got, you've got an amazing team.
And you've put that team together. Thank you.
There we are.
It was very thorough, very well put together. Thank you all. We appreciate that.
That's great.
And Dr. Atkins, I will say, anytime I've called you and said, all right, I'm sounding pretty stupid right now, but I need help to understand what's going on. Help me understand this. You have always been very gracious and answered all of my questions and followed up, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
I do, yes. You've had things thrown at you at the last minute, especially the past 24 months. Yeah, four years, but more so in the last two years, the out-of-the-blue things that we're requesting you, jump right on it.
I would just say, I think one of my favorite quotes is, "If I've seen fathers, because I stand on the shoulders of giants." You've got some giants in here. So whatever I've done is because of them. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So moving along, we have AFS report. Ms. Lefan?
Good evening, board members. I have Mr. Mark Thompson here. And he's the one who updated us on the status of AFS and where they're at and what their plans are moving forward. And also, Erica Hollis, we're here, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This action plan is a result of a recent visit I had here a couple of weeks ago, where I visited with several principals and probably over 20 teachers. And at that point, I realized that I had to come up with an action plan to correct some of our deficiencies. So what I'm going to present is what I found and what we're going to do to go moving forward. But first of all, what I'd like to show you is where we're at today as far as our contracted hours. We're at 618 hours, 91 employees. In our RFP, we presented that we would provide 602 hours. So with our shortages, we are providing the labor. We are short on some side of the county and some of the schools. But overall, we've got, we're finally getting to where we need to be with the hours. The next page is where we've sort of been over the last year with the pandemic, sort of up and down. Very difficult to find labor, a lot of turnover, and I think we've turned the corner with that. Right now, we're short only in night hours in Topsail Elementary, Middle, Topsail South, Cape Bureau, Heidi Trask, and Topsail High. But I think we're getting, at this point, we're getting those covered. Some of our current issues and not, these aren't in all the schools, but from a general standpoint, you know, we're short-staffed. We don't have, on the other side of the county, it's very difficult to find people. Over the last month, we've increased our wages, and that's helped tremendously. Surf City is a large school. We had just a small number of people cleaning it, and I believe we're fully staffed at this point. So that's a good thing. Our management during the pandemic, we were just totally reactive to problems. We were really good at it, but that's not where we need to be. We need to be proactive in what we do. And I'm going to tell you how we're going to do that. When I went through these schools and I saw some of the classrooms, I realized our training isn't where we need to be. So I'll address that shortly as well. Talking with the teachers and the principals, I realized our communication has been lacking. We went into a school where we thought everything was fine. We realized there were issues there, but we didn't know what those issues are. And so I've got a plan to correct that as well. And the last thing is accountability. We're just not holding our cleaners, our supervisors specifically, and our quality assurance managers accountable for the work that's being done in these schools. So what are we going to do to change this? First of all, I want Erica to present sort of a plan for training. We're going to start by bringing everybody in on a Saturday and teaching them how to clean classrooms, go through all the basics. So do what, Erica?
So this Saturday, we do plan to get some of our fairly new people that we do have in, that we did not have time to get trained, to bring them in, to get them trained, and break them up in groups to get them trained for the area in which they're supposed to be clean. And our supervisors are going to help with that.
As far as communication, I realized in talking to some of these principals that a communications book, and we've got some in some schools, but we're going to put them in every school. We're going to let the teachers and the principals communicate in those books on a nightly basis their concerns. And our supervisor will look at that book every night and sign it. And he also will be proactive in looking for maintenance issues that we see that need to be corrected. Also, weekly meetings with principals, our QA managers are going to meet with principals on a weekly basis. That's going to be documented and sent to me for me to look at. The most important thing I'm going to tell you tonight is the inspection process. When we rewarded this contract, we promised a compu-clean detailed inspection program. I think we rely a lot on principals and teachers telling us how good a job we're doing. We've got to inspect these schools after hours or before the schools open and see how these schools are left, and then correct these issues. We're going to hold these people accountable for the work, and we're going to turn this into being very proactive. The last thing I'd just like to say is we want to create a better culture. You know, the people that do our work, you know, on the employment totem pole, they're the last. They're on the bottom. And we want to make it a good place to work. What we're going to do is we're going to create an employee of the month program. We're going to have a, I've worked with Mr. Lefan on a custodian appreciation day where we recognize some of our good employees, and we've got a lot of very good employees. Erica has been instrumental in helping provide me with names that are, people that are doing above and beyond work. And she is going to get the ability to, when she does her payroll, when someone gets a compliment to award them a $25 gift certificate, and that will be done on every payroll. So that's my presentation. I'd like to open it up for some questions.
Board members, you have questions, comments, concerns?
So when do you expect the, when do you expect this is all going to see a turnaround? Because I know you're short-staffed, which all of us are, but when you actually start seeing where we can come back and say, okay, these were promises made, were these actually promises kept? Because in the past, when we've asked representation, someone to come in, you know, people were not able to answer the questions. And so you've come in with a good presentation, but a good presentation on paper alone is not going to clean the schools and reach what we need. And I know you're, you know, you're doing the best you can, but at what point do you say this is too big of a job for us, or?
It's not the size of the job. It's changing the way we look at things. When I go, I have contracts all over the state, and when I travel, I'll get up at 5:00 in the morning and I'll see how buildings are left. That's how you learn. That's how you see how buildings and schools are left. We have not done that, okay? And this compu-clean system, it will work, and we've not done it. We've recently trained our managers on it. We've implemented it. We will show these inspections to the principals, to the teachers, to Mr. Lefan, so that you know that we're looking. The only way we can correct these issues is if we're looking. So that's in place, and we will prove that. We will show that to you.
I guess the follow-up then would be, Mr. Lefan, you're the one, you're working closely with them on our overseeing. They go to you directly, I guess.
Yes, sir.
After seeing their proposal and what their plan of action is, do you have any comments or anything that you would like to add to that with confidence or with hesitation in moving forward?
I think the brand is well-priced, is well-written out. I think it's the actions that they're going to take. If everything is followed through, probably, I think we'll see a different look inside our buildings. Look what they have in place.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, man.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me say one thing before you go. Just, I think maybe if you, I know it's hard because we've got a lot of places and y'all have got a lot going on, but if you just try to make, just show up at the school, make business, pop in there, you know. Sometimes that may help, but it sounds like things Sometimes that may help, but it sounds like things are trying to move in the right direction, so.
We've got some good people. We're going to be making a new change with our quality assurance manager, but we have to be, we have to be in the face of the principals and we have to find out how we're doing. But that's not the key to what we do. You can rely upon that, but we have to, we have to put our heads on our pillow knowing the schools are clean. And the only way we can do that is by inspecting the schools and not being reactive.
Well, I mean, like, if you two would just pop in a place unexpectedly, that's what I mean.
Yes, sir.
It might would help. But again, it sounds like things are trying to move the right way, so.
Yeah, I really like the way the labor market is right now. People are coming back to work, so we're running ads constantly. We're just seeing a lot more people hit those ads, so.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. I was there that day when you had the meeting with Surf City Elementary and Surf City Elementary with the principals and the teachers. And I have to say, it did give me some cause for concern, which is why you're here tonight. Thank you for coming, and thank you for presenting the action plan. And it shows us that you are, you are taking some accountability on this.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll add is that I do know we have concerns. I was a principal. I know what that's like. I know what it's like to have to clean the bathrooms myself. I know what it's like to have to get out there and do some of these things. And I know it's hard work. But what you do when you hire people is you also find people who have ownership, and that starts from top down. And there's people who do have ownership in our county, in our schools, who are doing a great job. I would hope that you would make those model leaders for those others who might have a little hesitation or who might not be given 150% of the job. I'll suggest that, suggest that those people who are given 150% and who do have ownership, and I'm sure there are lots of principals in this room who would agree with me, that they get paid for what they are worth. Because until we start raising the money for some of them, they're not going to want to come back.
Right.
They're given and given and given, and it's like, why do it when?
What we did when we started the contract is, we gave out 60%, of the employees raises. We didn't, we didn't have to do that. Those were the employees that worked for the other company. The other company did give them raises. We did. We didn't have to do that. But we recognized that the people, 20% of my workforce in every contract has to go away. They're just, they're there because they need the paycheck, but they don't care. So we have to replace those constantly. But you're right, the people that do our work, that do a great job, we're going to pay them. We've got to take care of them, and we've got to thank them. We have to, we have to thank them and tell them they're doing a good job. We have to create an environment where they like coming into these schools and work. And that's on us, and that's on the schools, and we're all in this together, and we're going to do our part. And I know you'll do your part as well. It just takes a team effort. And to make all these schools look clean, look the same, that is our goal. Thank you.
Any more comments, board members? So the next is AFS contract discussions. That was requested by Mr. Hall last.
Well, they are, look, put the mic on. It was more to see how the performance had changed, and I think we just heard that. So I don't have anything else for that, unless anyone else does.
Well, I think we just need to stay on top of it, and I think maybe revisit it, give it 60 days, and maybe come back to the table and let's revisit it. I don't know. Those are frozen potatoes.
So, board, one of the requests the administration asked of me was to take a look at the contract as it was currently written. And that request was following the last month's board meeting, which I thought was an appropriate request of both the administration and the board. And so I tend to agree that with Mr. Hall and Mr. Smith and Ms. Montana, all simultaneously on this, which is, words are meaningful, action plans are meaningful, but honestly, it doesn't really mean as much until you see the rubber hit the road. I think a 60-day runway is a good idea. It also, the concept, the contract itself is, you know, is a solid contract built off of a solid RFP. And without going into additional details about it, the board has substantial amount of flexibility if it so choose to act. But with that being said, you know, I do believe that a 60-day revisit is a wise decision and would encourage that if the board so chose. Any specific questions the board may have about the contract?
What is the complaint process now? Are the, does all principals file their complaints with your office?
The principals go out a monthly report card, and that report card goes to Dr. Wilber, I can myself, and we share it with AFS on a daily basis. Anything that they come in, that they come into their buildings with, that they have, that they see that they have to be fixed, they email me directly and they copy AFS staff on it, and they respond to it as quickly as they can.
Any other questions, board members? 7.5 Airmark update. Mr. Lefan, assuming this is you again?
Board members, Airmark is doing a, does a update for you each semester. This is their first minute update on the first semester of this school year, and Jennifer Markin from Airmark is here. And we need Dr. Wilber to give us a brief introduction.
All right, I wanted to start out with just going over a recap of some of the things going on in the department. So I'm going to start out with our people. We've also had a very trying year with staff. We're fortunate. We have a great core group of employees that have been here prior to COVID and have stuck with us. Very excited that since January, we have onboarded and hired 15 new employees. We still have 21 positions open in the county to be completely staffed, to where we have every line open and functional. But we have started to see an increase in applicants. Chef Patrick joined our team to start of the school year for culinary support. Fortunately, Chef Patrick has been stuck in the school every day since he has joined the team, just helping with service, getting us through service. I would say 80% of the time since he's joined the team, he's been at Surf City cooking and serving students every day. Internal promotions. We're excited to keep and retain our employees by giving them avenues to grow with us. Pam Bannerman started out as, she was a Pender High manager, was then promoted to an hourly supervisor, and most recently, we were able to promote her to a salary supervisor. Renee Clerk, she started, she was at Topsail High School for about 12 years, and she was, this year promoted into an hourly supervisor. She oversees the Eastside Schools. And her cook, Liz, we then promoted her to the Topsail High School manager. Lomita Sykes started out as an hourly associate with us, and she has been promoted to the Topsail Elementary manager. Ally Murray started out as an hourly associate with us and is now the Cape Fear Elementary middle manager. Tyrene Sloan, excuse me, was hired as a cook. I started out the year at Trask as a cook, and he is now our Bourbon Middle School manager. Another part we did for the employees this year, we're doing $100 attendance bonuses. So every month, the employees come to work every day. They get an additional $100 in their paycheck coming to work. Some of the training that we did, we started off the school year, we did surf safe manager training for all employees. It's required that two employees on site have the training. We extended that to include everybody. We do that, we're going to continue doing that yearly to capture anybody that's expired through the school year and any new hires. We also did a three-day culinary chef training, where we had Chef Patrick and another executive chef, Murray came down to the account and spent three days with the managers and the cooks doing some culinary training. And I just updated the bottom, the student viewpoint survey that actually went live last week. That is available for all students and parents in the county. And it's designed for the elementary students to be taken with their parents for some help, to get some feedback on how we're doing and what improvements they'd like to see for going into next school year. Next slide is about participation, and we use 2019 school year as a base year, just to be more, the two COVID years skewed the information a little bit, just a little bit better representation of having all the kids back in the building. So our breakfast participation has gone up 16.9%, and our lunch participation is up 14.7% from 2019. After-school snack has gone down, but those students are captured in the dinner program. So we did a swap for a lot of dinner, where we transitioned the after-school kids to the dinner programs instead of the two component snacks, because of staffing and just supply issues at the beginning of the school year. So those, that's where the dinner program is at currently. Our meal equivalents are down. That is due to not having staff to run registers in the buildings. So we do not, that's not true, two of the buildings are currently doing snack sales. The goal is to get, get those opened up before the end of the school year. If I need a full slide. We have 81 school days from when this was created, 859,777 billable meals. Read this. So currently, at mid-year, the client return is at 989,777 dollars. The guarantee for the year was 700,000, so we're going to Great Lakes see the client return for this whole year. And 2019, same point of the year, we were at 125,000. And at the bottom of the page, our average daily meals, daily meals, last week, we had a day where we were over 11,000, 11,000 meals for the day. So we're seeing a huge increase in participation. We're really excited about it. And we're really hopeful that we can get the rest of our positions filled so that we can get all of our lines functional, get the ala car sales going. And just to note, there was a increased reimbursement rates that went into effect January 1st. They added an additional 25 cents for lunch Friday in January 1st, increased reimbursements. And then lastly, we are going to pilot a, we want to expand our dinner program. Currently, like I said, we're only doing that to a small percentage of the students who are already at school. We want to introduce a five-day dinner where we're sending it home once a week on Friday afternoons with the students, and they will get a meal kit. It will change weekly. We will send out prior Friday what will be in, what will be in the box. And they will receive five days' worth of that meal kit. And that is for this school year. Meals are still free for all the students through the end of June. They haven't decided yet if they're going to extend those waivers. So currently, this is available for all students. All students are eligible for this meal kit. That is all I have. Any big questions?
Board members, any questions?
So what's the most popular item for the kids right now?
Probably pizza.
Besides pizza, I'm sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry. But that pizza roll is popular right now.
They love the pizza roll. They love pasta. I think pasta dishes are very popular. Papas, nachos are popular. I think breakfast they enjoy, or like the breakfast pizza, breakfast time. Cereal is still a staple and something that, for whatever reason, we've had a really hard time getting in consistently this year.
How's that big doughnut still working?
Doughnuts are good. The elementary kids are getting Grinch doughnuts for Rita Cross and Mariposa. The elementary kids are getting Grinch doughnuts tomorrow.
Are they? What do they not like?
Well, they didn't like the pork loin.
Yeah, I heard about the pork loin. Yeah, I heard about that myself, or mine that eats everything, but you won't.
They didn't like, we were doing a pit ham with sweet potato meal. They did not like that. Took that off the menu. We did chili cornbread. Wasn't a big hit. We're going to run it one more time, see if it's even any better. It was not a favorite.
It's always interesting to hear what they kind of like, besides the pizza, of course, and the big doughnut, and what they don't like, so. Thank you. Just curious.
I have a question. Whenever the contract was renewed, we were brought this sample of different foods, of how the food quality was going to change and how different things were going to just come about. I've had opportunity to visit several schools in our district since that change. And one of my recent visits, one of the things that really caught me off guard was a chicken sandwich that was totally opposite than what, it was back from the old chicken sandwich days. It wasn't the chicken patty that was presented to the board. So has the food options, because of cost of food or because of whatever reason, has, have Airmark decided to go back to the old food?
It's the supply chain. We just aren't able to get it currently. We had, at the beginning of the school year, we had them, and then they disappeared, and they come back, and they're, they're just back and forth in the supply chain.
Well, it had two chicken patties on it, on the chicken sandwich, and I didn't know if they were just trying to make up for the amount of protein from the other one, but.
No, it's just supply chain. We just aren't able to get it. This week, we weren't able to get cheese sticks, and it varies week to week what comes in. Our production manager spends several hours every Wednesday afternoon on the phone with our vendor, going over outages and substitution lists, and sometimes it's just, it's what they have available is what we can bring in.
Another question I had, if any student, after they've eaten their lunch, decides, I know there are some that are still wanting more food, Vernon had told us at one time when he was with us that a student could go back up there and get another vegetable, or is that still policy that they could go up there and get, get something?
Yeah. We allow them to have as many fruits and vegetables as they'd like to take.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. Do elementary, do middle school students get the same amount of food as an elementary student?
The guidelines are very, very similar, yes.
Okay.
About the portion sizes are. Very, very small amount in calorie and sodium restrictions, but the portion sizes are almost identical. And I can, if you want, I can send you like the breakdowns of grade levels, because they go K through 5, 6 to 8, 9, 12, the breakdowns.
Okay.
I don't have those on me, but I can provide that for you.
It's just hard when you know that you have some elementary kids who.
Fifth grade, they're starving.
Yeah. I mean, well, I have a Mikey, and he eats very, so he has a high metabolism. But you also have kids in middle school who probably aren't big eaters, but then you have kids who are, and he could probably benefit from more quantities, quantity of food. Or in elementary, you have kids who are large, he could eat three of that kid decides plates just because that's, he's just hungry. That's what he wants.
And I think that's where the unlimited fruits and veggies originated.
Supposed to help do a filler.
It would promote selecting healthy options if you're still hungry, so that we, you know, we don't want the kids to go back to class hungry, but we also don't want to give them three slices of pizza and promote unhealthy eating. So I think that's where the unlimited fruits and veggies came into place. But as far as the guidelines for grade levels, they're, they're very similar, K through 8.
And just to piggyback on what you said, having a business ourselves in the restaurant business, I mean, what she's saying is absolutely accurate. Like chicken, I have no clue, it's just the way it is. And one of your providers is our provider also, and it's just so hard to get. And the substitution list, guys, sometimes the substitution list, and I can't imagine what yours looks like. I know what ours looks like, just on our small, much smaller business, but to-go plates. People have no idea. And the utensils, the plastic utensils, and the ramekins that things come in, and the ketchup packets, it's just, it's gone through the roof. So I completely understand where you're coming from. Yes, it is. But thank you.
No other questions? Thank you. 7.6 class utilization. Dr. Beal, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so board, in response to Mr. Hall's request, I've sent you all data files, but I'll pass these around. What you're getting is, the first one's going to be Heidi Trask. Second one is going to be Pender High. And the third will be Topsail High. And per Mr. Hall's request, those are all the sections. And per Mr. Hall's request, those are all the sections that have 10 or less. That is a filtered spreadsheet. All of you have the filtered spreadsheet, but you can take the filters off and do with it whatever you want, however you want. That's pulled directly out of Power School. Couple of things to be aware of specific to the data files. When you're looking at them, you of course see the expression, which is basically the section number, the term, if you see a 21, 22, it's a full year course. Or you'll see S1, which is semester one, S2, which is semester two. You'll see the course number. And then you'll see the underlying which course title. Also then you'll see a section number, teacher, room, the maximum that are in that class that it's scheduled for, and then the current enrollment in there. Now, a couple of things to be aware of. You can look deceptive sometimes because then often, often, more often than you would likely, you may have multiple courses in one class. So there may be a section with one child, and that was a section with two children, another section with another two children, but put them all together, there's five kids in that class. So a lot of it is very dependent on space conditions, where everyone is at. We see things like this at the high school level, especially with CTE courses where you have multiple levels of the same content area. So you may have a carpentry one, two, three. And you may have, because not a lot of students in each particular section at that particular period, you may put them all in, but each one may only have a couple of students. So you may have a full classroom, literally. So these are things to kind of just be aware of as you're looking.
Well, is there a way that, to the point, the point that I was after was like, you know, do you have a teacher that's teaching a class, a specific class, that may have six students enrolled? I mean total, because frankly, if someone's teaching, if there's a class with only six students in a place like Topsol High School that's that size. My common sense way tells me that that class needs to be axed and that teacher reassigned to something with a bigger need, because I mean, yeah.
So what we can do.
Money's not free, so. That's what my point is.
What we can do to really kind of get to that is we need to take a look at the course number and take a look to see if they're in the same general content area. We would need to take a look at the room, we would need to take a look at the period in which it's being taught, and section number.
Is there a way to easily do that with the spreadsheet?
In the spreadsheet, absolutely, we just have to get a little bit more information and a little bit more digging, but we can definitely.
My guess is it's probably not as bad of a problem as what I think, but. But I mean, at this point, when we're as short on teachers as we are, you know, you got to do what you got to do. Again, money's not free, so.
One of the things, and this is speaking strictly from personal experience at the high school level, and it's really important to see this in CTE classes. I, one of my old schools, we had sometimes five sections of a CTE course in, in a particular period, just to get enough people. And so that's where we see a lot of these, where sections might only have a few children.
And I mean, there probably are some things with CTE especially that are maybe so specialized that, you know, you can't say like, well, okay, if you have 10 or less, your class is gone, that's not what I mean. I mean, there may be circumstances, but I just, I just think that some things like that need to be looked at, because I mean, if that teacher can be better utilized somewhere else, I mean, so be it.
What we can do, if it, with your permission, we'd like to take a look, maybe culture it a little bit more.
Yeah, that's fine. Cause I, when I first saw the sheet, I said, well, I'll print this and mark what I have a question about, but then I realized the number, I didn't realize that some were combined, so. That's, I mean, I would not be surprised if this is only a handful of classes out of the whole county, but again, at this point, with the shortage that we're facing, and again, money is not free. We've got to do what we've got to do to make it efficient, and that's just my thought. Don't know what everybody else thinks, but that's my thought, so.
All right.
But thanks.
Any other questions, Board members? Thank you, sir. Board members, we are now at the section of the agenda for the consent agenda. We've had a chance to review the consent agenda and all the attachments to it. Is there any questions concerning this consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Give us a second.
Can I ask a question before we move on?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Betsy, this will be for you. The teacher supplement on there, is that an increase or a decrease or? On this amendment, there was something about.
That's coming up.
Coming up.
Okay, good, never mind. I was looking at it on the screen when I got it out of the door, I guess. I have no questions, so you had a second, sorry about that.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board members. Now we're at the action agenda. 9.1, our monthly mask protocols. The Board members, you know that the CDC has released, relaxed the guidelines for buses, just to make that a consideration.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue optional masking for Pender County schools and buses. A second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Burden, I do have one question about your motion, is that effective? Immediately or?
It can be effective. Yeah.
To be effective immediately.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
9.2, CTE HP Chromebook monitor purchases.
Chairman, I'm here on behalf of Ms. Woolen Weber. We started a process last year for trying to retrofit, retrofit and upgrade our CT computer labs, but that's not just simply buying new stuff, we really are trying to move away from the standstill desktop labs where the room really can't be used for anything other than exactly that purpose. So last year, the Board approved the purchase of laptops, some of which are unique to our CTE programs, all of them can use Chromebooks, they actually use some of the PCs, laptops for some of their programs. Today or tonight, before you continuing that effort on behalf of our CTE program, we're actually looking to try to upgrade six of our various computer labs and actually get away from the desktops completely. It's not a typo, actually, double check, because I thought maybe Chromebox, Chromebook, it actually is a Chromebox, which are even smaller and more adaptable, allow us to use a number of different rooms that could be potentially a computer lab. It also means that we can move it, which is one of the other real big hurdles when we look to creating a computer labs. So they can be used not only to continue our business courses, but it also may allow us to be a little more flexible as we look to increase the number of STEM classrooms that such that we'll need for students to be able to access the internet, but not necessarily in a stationary setting. The funds used would be through our state CTE program for the funding that's provided by them. And so I'm seeking tonight to approval by half of our CTE program for the purchase of 180 of the Chromebox G3 minis and also an equal number of the monitors to go with them to connect them for a total cost of $88,965.45, utilizing our state CTE.
So this money was no local money?
Correct, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase?
As a, as a heads up, Board, before you do that, this, these items will be involved pursuant to state contract, therefore, the vetting process has already been done by the state, this is, you know, it is a done deal as far as my review goes, so just heads up. Thank you, Board.
Another question before we make a motion on it about this, is that what is currently being used, that these are going to replace, what plan of action is going to be with those computers?
I'm not sure I know that Ms. Woolen Weber's been discussing with Mr. Allen and technology team, I don't know the exact plan, but I can make sure you get that in.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely not just throw away. In the past, I used to sell them back, we used to get a little something for them, I don't know if that's still.
If this money wasn't used for them, it really can't be used for anything else.
Right, specifically for the CTE program, no, sir. So we can't use it for like language arts or anything like that, it has to be used for the CTE program.
But not necessarily, I just, it just seems like we buy computers every time we're here, that's why.
I'll make a motion then to approve the purchase of $88,965.45 for the Chromeboxes that's been paid out of the PRC 14 CTE funds.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion, any further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. I think I stay here.
Thank you, do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also seeking approval to enter in a contract with Soliant Health Incorporated. We, speaking of labor shortages and vacancies, we have a vacancy currently in our deaf and hard of hearing, a hearing impaired teacher. We believe we have maybe possibly located someone for next year, however, we're trying to cover the gap. We have been working with Soliant other situations, they have secured for us a certified deaf and hard of, hard of hearing teacher to provide virtual services until we can find a in-person teacher. Seeking approval to enter a contract not to exceed $46,292 in order to be able to provide those services until we can provide an in-person HI teacher.
Board members, is there a motion to approve this contract?
I make a motion that we approve the EC Services contract with Soliant Health Incorporated not to exceed $46,292.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board members.
Chairman, thank you, Board members. Thank you, sir.
Small county and low-well sonny bonuses.
This may be, need to be a team effort, boys, because there might be some questions back and forth.
Absolutely, thank you.
We got your back.
Yes, I was drafted for this, but I will return to you there. I will defer to the professionals on this one. So as you're aware, with so much funding now suddenly coming down from the state after budget was finally passed for fiscal year 2021, 2022, a signing bonus program for teachers that were newly hired this school year, and it comes from the supplemental small county funding from PRC 19 and 030, 019 and 031.
You're on the wrong one.
I am?
Yeah, 62's got to be, isn't it? Wasn't 62 first?
Looking at the.
Oh, you're, you're right. 62's first.
This is the matching for new teachers.
Okay, yeah.
It's supposed to be the one for one match, up to a thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that's what I'm looking at, but I was also.
But we can't talk about low wealth in that because it's, never mind.
So, okay, so let me go to the spreadsheet because Dr. B did the cover sheet, so I'm reading from the cover sheet.
Cover sheet's got both of them on it.
Yeah. But they're.
So then if you go to the chart that follows in section 7A.5, 062, small county and low wealth signing bonus, that highlighted section, so pretty much what you have here, and I'll just kind of shift on over, teachers hired or eligible, they were hired by qualifying LEA after July 1, 2021, they had to still been employed in the district as of October 1 of 2021. Caveat here, and this is the main part for you to capture, is that the signing bonus must be matched on the basis of $1 in state funds for every $1 in local funds, up to $1,000 in the state funds. So, and keep in mind, federal funds, including ESSR funds, may not be used to meet the matching requirement. So Betsy, translate please.
Yeah, the, I can't remember, it was either 80 or 88 is the number that we have that our news features that may possibly be eligible for this. So it would be up to the Board to decide, if you wanted to give them up to the total of $1,000, you would have to match 500 for every one that you gave a thousand to. Just so you know, there are a number of units not giving this bonus because they are not going to match it, and you do not have to give the whole thousand, you could give 500, you could give 250. So it is up to the Board to decide what needs to be done with this.
You're rough on teachers that have already been here working, isn't it?
It is, and a lot of the teachers that came in, Dr. A, you can help me here, got sign-on bonuses, just so you know.
Sounds totally, wait, say that again.
Some of the new people that were hired that were qualified for this has already had sign-on bonuses from this.
Like from some of the subject areas.
Right. How many are we looking at? I can't remember if it was 80 or 88.
If you take off the signing bonuses that people already received, how about the ones who did not? How many people are we looking at, we'd be talking about that did not receive a sign-on?
I can't think of that. We just looked at the number of people that were hired after July 1st and were still here October 1st to see how much money this would cost us. And it was.
That amounts, how much? Need to run off? It's on here.
Forty thousand dollars?
About forty thousand.
About forty thousand dollars.
So if you do the max, it'll be a forty thousand dollar match if you choose to have, or the queen, and so forth.
Word, I've got one.
Really, it's really the, whatever you want to do or not.
Yeah, and I would just mention, I probably shouldn't, but I will, no matter what you do, somebody's going to be unhappy because they'll think they should have got it, they may have missed it by day, and how dare us not give it to them, I'm just going to say that's the kind of interesting things that goes on, anyhow.
So in other words, everybody would not receive.
And everybody that got hired will not receive.
Right, because it had to been that they were hired after July 1, but still in place on October 1. So that's your window.
So there's two questions. One, are you or aren't you? The other question is, is so, I don't know how much.
So Board members, there's the presentation now.
And the match will have to come out of Fund 2.
And what is that, that is local money?
Of the funds, yes it is, that is what.
It's paid to us by Pender County.
And, you know, a couple of other sources.
Derived from property tax, right?
Majority of it comes from Pender County.
All right.
All of our supplements come from Pender County.
And the maximum would be what, 40,000, is that what you said? I mean, it, it would just depend how many actually qualify for it. We did this very fast and we don't think it would be any more than 88, but it could be less, but it'll be around 40,000.
There's always possibility we may have been off by a number on the upper end of that, but.
Mr. McPherson, I may ask a question. I haven't done this before. The next line out of 9.5 may be of interest to the Board in making this decision?
Yeah, maybe.
Could they table this and go through this into the options?
Procedurally, there'd just be a motion by a Board member to table this discussion until after they hear the next presentation and revisit it after that.
I thought that was a separate issue.
No, no, it is a separate issue.
It is a separate issue.
But you only have so many, so many dollars in Fund 2. And so if you want to spend Fund 2 dollars, you know, choosing whatever bonus you choose, do so wisely. Mr. Chair, if I could be endorsed for just a second, I have one point and one question. One point, in addition to just the amount of money that you'd be designating from Fund 2 would be the FICA portions that would be included, so it's not just, you know, $500 or, or 250, it's that plus the FICA on top of that. So just understand that.
They might need compared to retirement. Retirement isn't required for the bonus.
So, so that, that's the point.
As presented.
The question, um, I've got, and, uh, the administration may not have an answer, but it's, it, um, do we know what, uh, the neighborhood is doing as far as surrounding counties?
Counties that actually abut up to us is doing it.
Everybody?
Because I got a list of all the counties that were doing it and the ones that were not, but the ones right around us is doing it.
Of course they are, because they get all our sales tax money. What do you expect?
Okay, and, and add, add the thousand dollar level or, or what is?
All I've got was the survey that said if they were doing it or if they were not.
Oh, is it yes or no? It wasn't the amount?
It was a yes or no, it wasn't.
I think we should go ahead and vote on this as it is in order presented.
So it didn't break it down if that was people who had already received a bonus, they were excluding those, or the five hundred versus a thousand? It was none of that, just a yes or a no?
Yes or no.
It can be any amount.
Yeah, I mean, that makes it a thousand.
Totally up to the board. I mean, it could be any amount you want it to be up to about, but it has to be mapped.
Just remember that we have a huge bond coming up that we will never get funding for, and it is all derived from local tax money that comes from the property taxpayers in this county. I will just say that.
Board members, you've heard the presentation. Is there a motion to approve the, approve this motion? And then we'll make a separate motion for the amount if this motion passes.
Uh, I don't know. I'd really like to table this and look at this next item before we come back to it.
Hey, board members, there's a motion to table nine point four eight.
I'll second that motion.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we've tabled that. We're now moving to nine point.
Now, that's a tie vote.
That's a tie. Well, you didn't do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Aye. So we'll move to nine point five. Who has that one? I can't see all of them.
Okay, so the next one is a, um, really interesting line item that is in the budget, and this is supposedly a continuing item that will be given every year, just, they don't know how much. It is supplemental funds for teacher compensation such as it will add to the supplement that teachers get. You cannot, like, take away some of the supplement they're already getting, you cannot supplant. So this would be in addition to the nine percent supplement that you are already giving teachers out of local funds. This is actually coming out of, um, funds being allotted by the state to give to teachers. And like I said, it's supposed to continue every year. The, um, what, well, if you have probably read, it says that you, as the Board of Education, is responsible for determining the distribution of the local supplement within the confines of the legislation. And you cannot exceed the amount that they have given us, and I put in there, it's a thousand and ten dollars is the amount that they have put for this year. Now, what they have said, next year it might be less than that, next year it might be more than that. They, they don't know. It's just saying that it is going to be a continuing item. And it tells you who can get it, and this is, we always run into problems because all sorts of people won't, thinks that they are entitled to it and they blame us, and we have to go by the legislation. The one thing that they specifically has said, they have to be working at the school and they have to be coded to the school. We have folks, such as in Dr. Aiken's department, who are coaches and that type thing, that would not qualify for these supplement, this additional supplement, because they are not actually at one school all the time, and they are not coded to a school. So I just want you to understand that because that's some of the information that folks tend to ignore.
Not sports coaches, but any academic coach.
Right, academic coaches.
They're not.
Or not eligible.
They're not at school with a percent.
And if you read the, uh, part where it talked about principals and assistant principals, we have nobody that is in that category now. At one time, there was a group of assistant principals who would have made more as a teacher, so you had to supplement theirs to what the teacher would make. We don't have anybody there, so principals and assistant principals are not eligible for it. You cannot provide supplements to central office or non-certified employees. It has to be used to supplement and not supplant, which we have talked about. And so, I mean, this is kind of a, a given, I guess, because it's not money coming from local funds. This is coming from the state.
Correct.
And you decide how it's going to be paid, whether you want it paid as a, right now, as you know, we pay all local supplements monthly. You know, this could be paid, wanting to pay it, well, this year it's got to be paid before June thirtieth, I guess, for next year.
So this supplement does not come from local money at all?
It does not come from local money.
Then why did we?
It comes from your other taxpayer money.
Yeah, oh yeah.
True.
It's all taxpayer money.
Yeah, doesn't come from our, the local Pender County government.
So what would happen if we didn't use it?
Uh, it goes back to the state.
And we would be labeled insane.
True. I'll agree with that one, right, Mr. George.
I even agree with that.
Yeah, because this is kind of a.
Put that on the board.
Just do it first, and if I got all that right, thank you. I just want to make sure.
I, I think the only, the only thing I would add is the, the amount. It's eight hundred sixty-three thousand eighty dollars. That's your, that's your pot for this year.
And this does include, um, retirement. This is considered compensation, not a bonus, so we have to take retirement out of it and match the retirement.
So essentially, the, the pot gets a little smaller because, because.
Right.
That is a, and it's a permanent adjustment to the supplement.
It is.
Which is frankly, a little problematic from a legal standpoint, uh, if the money doesn't come next year. Now, let's get it. If you don't give the money out, it goes away. It goes back to Ralph.
Right.
I will say, I, I don't quite understand why they just wouldn't give the teachers a raise.
Yeah, it looks like they would just give them a raise.
I don't understand the concept, but everything's a little bit different. I mean, it's, everything's different this year.
Yeah, that just sounds like the biggest thing is not everybody gets it, so.
Well, yeah.
And that's true.
They're hunting pick on this one, but anyhow.
They do that all the time, anyhow.
Every time they're voting them, they, they line out a amount, certain people that don't get it.
Now, then I make a motion that we approve it.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 No opposed. Okay, we've tabled the motion for seven point, or nine point four. Review this. Is there a motion to reopen that?
I make a motion that we reopen the agenda item that we ta, uh, tabled, um, small county and low wealth signing bonuses.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Hall, is in favor, say aye.
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 So we are now back to Dr. Moore. So we heard the presentation earlier, some ma, some matching bonus for new hired teachers. That were hired July first, October first. We need to decide if we're going to pay the bonus and if we are, the amount.
That's correct.
So what is your pleasure, board members, what the first motion would be to approve the bonus or not?
And we just don't know at this time how much we'd be talking.
And you also don't have an exact amount because of retirement, correct?
No, this don't have retirement. This would only have.
This has nothing to do with it, okay.
But it does have FICA.
Yeah, it has FICA, but.
Yes, FICA, not retirement.
So you would also be subject to any tax changes that came about later with FICA, correct? Which could be less or more, you know, more or less.
If, if the, if it was eighty-eight people with the FICA, it would cost ninety-four thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars with the FICA. Oh, no, divided in two, sorry, that's the whole amount. Forty-seven three sixty-six. Well, it should be the maximum if we go by.
Well, that's a teaching position, say, just saying.
That's, would come out of local. That would have to come out of local.
Local money.
Yes.
Derived in this county from our local people.
It would come out, it would come out of our fund balance, uh, right now, correct?
Well, you know, we would have to say it's coming out of fund balance because of doing it in years and see how much, you know, how it all works out.
And that's if you gave them.
The maximum.
The maximum. And that's if we kept it with the people who've already received a sign-on bonus and they would still get that also. Is that correct?
That would be my guess. I mean, they're, they're saying our July one and still here October one.
But you pointed out that there's some of these people who would probably follow this, who probably already received a sign-on bonus.
I would feel sure there is with the way that.
I just know that when we have schools to build that we can't afford, and when we can't afford to maintain what we've already got, local money is just tough. That's my opinion.
But in the scheme of things, how much are we looking in fund balance right now, too? I guess that's the other question.
This one would be.
Five million. How much was it, Betsy? Five million dollars in fund balance for me?
Yeah.
Probably what you'll need for construction down the road.
But at the end of the day, I know it's a teaching position, but at the end of the day, it's not going to.
Board members, last call for a motion. No motion. Moving on to nine point six, review and recommendations for salary scale adjustments. Can we start off?
I'll chime in with you.
All right, so more, um, graciously, we appreciate, uh, more than a year ago, we actually voted on a, on a salary schedule to bring everybody up to par, which we actually were right in time. They did a regional study this year right after that, and we had a lot of physicians that were within some moderate level of being on the scale instead of being way behind them, like we would have been. Very appreciative of that, very appreciative of the fact that a lot of people here were actually raised, given raises that haven't been given raises for up to eleven years. So if you remember those conversations, that was, that was very appreciated. What we've done now is the regional study's been done and we're, we're actually going back and looking at it. And there are a few things on there that we probably need to tweak to get us somewhat within marginal middle ground of what's being paid in the region. Hearing all the discussions tonight, everything around this is keeping hiring, keeping our hiring. And so we're hoping this will help do that, maintain some people in certain positions, uh, because larger districts are circling and it is, it is difficult for us to compete. And so we do it with more qualitative resources than quantitative, but tonight we need to talk a little more about quant, quantitative. So number one on this list is instructional assistants. Uh, they are not within the regional average. They're quite a bit off, and I'll let Ms. Chestnut explain what that money would come from.
Well, actually, I guess you're probably aware, Dr. Moore, if I get this wrong, help me. We cannot right now fill all instructional assistant positions. We are struggling to get them. So what happens is when that happens and, you know, we're given teacher assistant money, and it can only be paid for teacher assistants. So what I do is when we can't hire the people needed to use the money in that line item, y'all know me, I'm not letting anything go back to the state. And one thing they did a number of years ago was change the teacher assistant line item where you could not just pay kindergarten through fifth grade assistants. You can pay any assistants, which includes EC assistants, IASS assistants, or whatever. So what I have typically done at the end of the year is when the money's left, I just do what we call two O twos. And I take the money out of, this is O twenty-seven, it goes back into O sixty-nine, O thirty-two, wherever it's come from. That's what I do because we have in the last two to three years not used all the teacher assistant money for the normal O twenty-seven teacher assistants. So I took a look at what I've been doing to see, and truthfully, we can cover what it will take to bring our assistance up to at the regional average. Now, this is not putting them above the average, it's putting them at the regional average. At least they would be getting something. Unfortunately, so much of that money, one quarter of it to be exact, has to go to match retirement, which they will not see in their checks now. But if they stay and retire, they will see it. I just want to say that because it sounds like a, and it is a lot of money, but one-fourth of it has to go to retirement. I mean, that's where we're at. But that's just, that's what I do. Um, at the end, I never, I never let state money go back. And I finagle it around legally so that it's there. Y'all know that, we don't miss.
In a nutshell, that's the, that's the big change here. The TAs need some help. It's not local money.
And this is not local money.
It's money that's, uh, is reoccurring.
The only way it will affect the local money is, you know, there's a three percent supplement for all non-certified staff. It will up that just a tiny bit. It will not make a huge difference. But, um, I was personally pretty shocked at how much below the average we were with teacher assistants. And I, I just really was, and I just thought, man, no wonder we can't hire teacher assistants. I mean, honestly, I, I had no idea. That was one thing nice about this regional study in one way, but then another, it's like, man, what are we doing? So anyhow, that's the first one.
Number two is the office support staff, uh, are not within the regional average. That would include data managers, school treasurers, assistants. They are very close.
Those are very close.
A few of them would need to be adjusted, and it's a minimum of twenty-two thousand dollars is what that would take to adjust these averages. Ms. Chestnut's looking at attrition as a possible matter, which means as people retire out, you hire new people or people with less years, you don't pay as much. And you could find twenty-two thousand dollars across this district.
But most of them, there's just a very few of them that are not on the average. So it, it would not be for them, everybody would not get a raise. I mean, they just wouldn't, but.
Individual adjustments.
It would be, there would be a few individual adjustments. But the ones who are behind are the finance, human resources, and central offices. They are much below the regional averages. That's the reason if you go to Dehunover County, you see all the people I've trained over the years working for Dehunover County. And Sampson County, yeah, this one.
So she was, she's referring to the human resource finances and services. On the very next on that same paragraph, number, the number, second paragraph, number number two, the adjustment cost needed to bring these positions at the average would be a hundred and one thousand dollars per year. This cost could be covered by incoming low wealth money?
We were given more low wealth money this year because, of course, we have greater student population. That money, we budget out a lot of times for what it has been budgeted for. It doesn't, well, just like what I was telling you a while ago, if we have teachers in there and we have any positions left anywhere else, I move it out of there. No low wealth money has ever gone back. You, you see a lot of technology vault out of low wealth, truthfully. And then you see it at the end of the year. I just think, and you are allowed to pay office support personnel out of low wealth. And of course, we would use all the O three money first, but having raised these substitute salaries, I don't know how that's going to head out this year. But I just, I personally feel it would be a good use of the money. So even, um, staff, and you get them trained and then they leave, and then you got to train them again. Of course, I won't have to worry about that much longer, but I personally feel like it is definitely a positive to do that.
Three and four are similar, uh, maintenance and transportation and child nutrition. A minute amount of money in, in the scope of things to bring a few people back up, back to where they need to be at. Number three, um, basically about five thousand dollars to, to adjust a few people's salaries and maintenance and transportation. And child nutrition, uh, board voted to move, move, go ahead and move ahead to the fifteen dollars. And, uh, so really, there's only, there's ten employees there that would be, that need, um, three to five dollars an hour to bring them up to average.
And of course, right now, we have plenty of fund five to do that with that issue.
Ms. Chestnut, what qualifies our county for low wealth money? Because that's not a guaranteed money every year, is it?
No, it has to do with the formula of how they do the county. It has nothing to do with the tiers you're on. I will tell you that because, you know, from what.
We're in tier three.
But it has to do with the way they do the formula, and it is very complicated about what the county, the county's tax rate, what can be paid. I mean, it is totally complicated. If they take low wealth, we will, we will, I will just say this. Right now, we pay all the data managers, all the school treasurers, we pay nurses, we pay some teachers. I think the HR folks have paid out low wealth. Some of them's paid out low wealth, some of them's paid out of O three. They do not give us. They do not give us near the money we would need to, I mean, we got 2.5 million this year. I mean, you can think about what we were able to pay out of that. And we, we buy a lot of technology out of it, we fund, recommend instruction some, probably not as much as they like to have, but at least they get some. I have a whole list in my office of what, what we pay out of it.
The board would, the recommendation would be to consider the adjustments to the current salary schedule, to bring everybody within, not over, but at least to median of what's going on in the region.
Board members, you've heard the presentation. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendations for salary scale adjustments.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. LaFawn, DOT easement. It seems like this is becoming a reoccurring. Maybe that will put this thing to bed tonight.
I hope so. Board members, Mr. Chairman, this is what we discussed on Friday. You asked that I go back to DOT with a counter offer. Counter offer was made, and DOT accepted the counter offer. So I would like to recommend that board accept that DOT easement offer in the amount of $281,475 for the bypass project, which is behind Topsail High School.
Board members, we discussed this Friday, and, you know, it'll be a sound wall back there now, also.
I would, I would request, Mr. Chairman, that whomever makes the motion, please add the support and request for the noise barrier in that motion. That way, it's, it can be considered one motion at the same time. That's the board's wish, but we do need to vote to include or request the noise barrier at this time as well.
I can't make a motion, and I can't adjust this thing, but I did, would like to recommend that the funds from this stay for capital improvements at the Topsail Middle, Topsail High School campus in some form, if that can be made. Other than that, if it does and it doesn't, that's just my recommendation.
Now, Mr. Chair, as a procedural matter, you could step aside and give the gavel to Ms. Burns if you wanted to make said motion and do so. That is an option available to the chair at any point in time, if you so choose.
Really? I never knew that. And if you don't want to do it, I know I'd be more than glad to make the motion for you. That makes it easier.
Mr. Smith? I make a motion, then, that we accept the offer that was presented by the DOT with the amendment that our attorney has presented with the barrier wall, and then also to a friendly amendment to add to that, that those funds would be used to apply to the needs at the Topsail High School, Topsail Middle School facilities.
Board members, do you have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. You can tell, and they can start building the highway now.
Mr. George, I also have the documents you signed, and I have Dr. Hill and you captured in the same room before we go into closed session. I have Mr. Smith here to notify us in force. So...
They started moving equipment up there to that lot today, right north of the school. Where are we at here? Comments from board members? We'll start with Ms. Fontana.
Um, I don't think I have anything that lets everybody have a great spring break. It is next week. Enjoy.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Let me just say thank you to everyone that's come out. Let's hope the majority of our principals are here tonight, so I want to thank you for that, and also hopefully, some of the much-needed planning and rest that you can get in the upcoming week, with your break. One thing I want to leave you with, just a thought, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure that other board members feel this way, there is an ancient proverb that says this, "When eating fruit, remember the one who planted the tree." And so I think it's very important that the fruit that our students and ones that come before them have eaten from your labor, that we never forget that. And so when you hear us up here going back and forth about local funds and money, ultimately, we know we're dealing with individuals that have to feed their families, and we do thank you for your service and what you do for our, our schools. So we haven't forgotten the trees that you planted. Thank you.
Ms. Burns?
Yes, I would only say one thing, and it's Read Across America Week, and I just wanted to thank Principal Fuller for inviting me over to Pender Lee. I went yesterday, and I had such a good time. Thank you so much for that. I needed that. I, this is one of the favorite, one of my favorite activities, being on the Board of Education here, and I, I always take a great amount of joy in coming out and reading to the kids, and like I said, I just wanted to recognize that, and thank you for inviting me. If anybody else needs a board member to read at their elementary schools, just saying, you know my email address, and thank you all, and enjoy your spring break.
Mr. Hall?
I don't have anything.
And I really don't either, but also, everybody have a good spring break. It's well deserved. We're almost to the finish line for this year. Hopefully, the weather's nice next week. I get to go out of town for a couple of days. Mr. Attorney?
Good evening, board. I have a few highlights, lowlights, whatever legal update items I'd like to share with you. I don't want to take up too much time. The first is the Free the Smiles Act. As many of you may know, Senate Bill 173 was a bill that passed with bipartisan support in both the House and Senate, that would put local board decisions in the hands of parents, and would remove the obligation of this board to vote monthly regarding face covering protocols. That was vetoed last Thursday by Governor Cooper. However, both the Speaker of the House, Representative Moore, and Senator Berger have went on record, saying that is not the last that they will hear of this bill, and they both plan on moving forward with a veto override, to the point that Speaker Moore mentioned it over the weekend during his comments, leading up to the next couple of weeks. My sources in both the governor's office and in the legislative building are assuming that it's not going to happen this week, that it will likely be the next week, if there's an attempt to override the veto. So that is thing one. Thing two is, as you have seen, there has been a substantial shift in the CDC's recommendations that will eventually lead to a revision in the Strong Schools Toolkit. I want to commend this board on their actions tonight to provide masks optional on school buses. I think that that is a appropriate step to take, and I believe your, your students and bus drivers will thank you for taking that position. And the final thing is, the State Superintendent is seeking a parent advisory commission. It is going to be a 48-member commission comprised of six parents or guardians. So there will be two traditional public school parents, one charter school, one homeschool, one private school, and one at-large public school member from the largest county in each region. So with that being said, if you know any worthy parents and/or individuals who are parents and/or board members, who may want to serve on the 48-member commission of State Superintendent Truitt's Parent Advisory Commission, the application deadline is March 31st. And with that, that is my update for this month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Hill?
I've got one thing, and I contribute this totally to Dr. Akins' last promise, and received and delivered, JROTC Coast Guard established Topsail High School membership.
Thank you, sir. We certainly appreciate that. I think it's been well received, being well received already, there seems to be a lot of interest.
You've already had a large number of staff, and you've been community members, you would already want to apply.
I've seen that. All right, if there's nothing else, board members, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
The County Board of Education will enter closed session, subject to the advice from the attorney, pursuant to N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS 115C-319, and to consider matters relating to the initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute 143-143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C., 1232G, and N.C. General Statute 115C or 02, to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property, as provided by N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A5, and to consider and give instructions to the board's attorney concerning Burns Fisher versus Pender County Board of Education et al.
Board members, there's the motion. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a good week, weekend, spring break. Thank you all. Have a good week, weekend, spring break.
Board members, we're back in open session. I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes and to have those remain confidential.
I make that motion that we approve the meeting minutes and that we keep it confidential.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Board members, do we have the HR report and the addendum? Is there a motion to approve the HR report and addendum as presented?
I make the motion that we approve the HR report and addendum as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Board members, is there a motion to adjourn?